Call the meeting in order, roll call please.
Mayor Rankin.
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Selaya.
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Here.
Councilmember Montoya.
Here.
Councilmember Walters and Councilmembers Woolridge will not be with us tonight. We do have a quorum.
Thank you. We'll all stand for the invocation part and then the pledge of allegiance tonight. We're going to do a moment of silence for all those who have gone on before us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and every and just one. You know, never so few words have meant so much right now as the trouble we're facing in the Middle East and putting our soldiers in harm's way over there. Tonight, when you hit your knees to pray to the good Lord, just kind of remember those boys over there that are fighting for our protection, that we get to make the decision we get to make over here because of what they're doing for us. So just remember the boys over there, okay? Boys and ladies, I should say. Thank you. Lisa. This is the first call to the public for comment on issues within jurisdiction of the town council. Councilmember or council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of council shall not discuss or take any action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. This time I have one call to the public. And John? And I'm not Danilo, right?
Dantico.
That's pretty close.
Good evening, council. My name is John Dantico. Live at 5597 East Dionysus, Florence, 85 whatever it is, 132. Yeah, I'm rising in opposition to the annexation of Magic Ranch and believe that the town of Florence repeatedly circulated a defective petition that was materially and substantially different from the blank petition that was filed with the Pinell County Recorder in violation of the Arizona Revised Statutes 9471A1 and 9471A1D. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Manning. And Barbara gets an extra 30 seconds tonight because I shut her off 30 seconds the other night, early.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Barbara Manning, 39, 39 North Monument Drive, Florence, Arizona. The vote on home rule resulted in a voter of no confidence for the town council and the town manager. I hope that the town council is aware that the scope of your North End project and the $5 million bond that you are supporting had led to that defeat. I hope you'll be responsive to the concerns of the citizens, come up with a modified plan, no $5 million bond, something that everybody can support. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Are there any other members of the council have anything they'd like to say? Hearing none, I'll close. Call to the public. Lisa.
Consent agenda. All items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or member of the public objects at the time the item is called. Item A, appointment of K. V. N. E. Harmon to the Library Advisory Board with a term to expire December 31, 2015. Item B, authorization to forward a favorable recommendation to the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control for Coolidge Florence Elks Lodge 2350, application for a special event liquor license for a fundraiser to be held on October 5, 2014, at the Charles Whitlow Memorial Rodeo Grounds. Item C, authorization to forward a favorable recommendation to the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control for Pinell County Historical Society Museum's application for a special event liquor license for a fundraiser to be held on October 24, 2014, at the Pinell County Historical Society and Museum. Item D, approval and acceptance of the Register of Demands ending July 31, 2014, in the amount Mayor, members of councils, that is your consent agenda before you this evening.
Does any member of the council have anything they'd like taken off the consent agenda? Any member of the public have anything you'd like taken off their consent agenda? Before we vote on it, I'd like our finance director, Mike, to explain why. I've never seen a warrant register in one month for $4 million. Explain why to the public.
Mayor, town council, the reason that it's $4 million is July is the month that we pay the debt service, pay the debt service on the GO bonds, the special assessment lien bonds, or semi-annual payments. It's when the principal and interest is due. That's the primary reason.
Thank you. None of the questions, any motion?
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda as written.
Second. We have a motion and a second to consent, approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item unfinished business A, ordinance number 619-14, discussion approval disapproval of an ordinance of the town of Florence, Pinell County, Arizona, extending and increasing the corporate limits of the town of Florence, Pinell County, Arizona pursuant to provisions of Title IX, Chapter IV, Article VII, Arizona Revised State Statutes amendments thereto by amending certain territory contiguous to the existing town limits of the town of Florence, Arizona, and providing for rescission of such annexation if the annexation is challenged. Magic Ranch Annexation Number 201301, first reading was held on August 4, 2014. At this time, the town of Florence did conduct signature collections and we did receive 43, or I'm sorry, 54.3177% of the property owners signing off on those petitions. The assessed evaluations totaled 56.5652%. Mr. Eckoff?
Mayor, council, good evening. If you don't, if it's acceptable to you, I think I'm going to have abbreviated presentations on these items tonight because we've been speaking about these items for the past year. But this is simply the adoption of the annexation ordinance for the Magic Ranch Annexation. Following this will be the same for the Arizona Farms Project and then also the application of comparable initial zoning and then there's some property issues, you know, that were rezoned in the, as part of the annexation process. I would be happy to address any specific questions you may have about this item.
Any member of the council have any questions? No. I don't. Okay, thank you, Mark. This time we need a motion.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance number 619-14 for the Magic Ranch Annexation 2013-01.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 619-14 for the Magic Ranch Annexation 201301. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the questions. Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montoya.
That's the town manager and he's on vacation.
I apologize. Councilmember Montoya.
Yes.
Councilmember Selaya.
Aye.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Rankin.
Aye. We have a unanimous vote.
Again, my apologies, councilmembers. Item B, ordinance number 620-14, discussion approval disapproval of an ordinance of the town of Florence, Pinell County, Arizona, extending and increasing the corporate limits of the town of Florence, Pinell County, Arizona pursuant to the provisions of Title IX, Chapter IV, Article VII, Arizona Revised Statutes and amendments thereto by annexing a certain territory contiguous to the existing town limits of the town of Florence, Arizona, and providing for rescission of such annexations if the annexation is challenged. Arizona Farms Annexation Number 2013-02, first reading was held on August 4, 2014. Town of Florence did process annexation petitions totaling 60.177% of the property owner signing that they are in favor of annexation, which equated to a assessed valuation of 68.59%. Mr. Eckoff?
Mayor, members of the council, the same presentation as the previous. This is the annexation ordinance for the Arizona Farms Annexation and I would be happy to address any specific questions you might have.
Any member of the council have any questions for Mark?
No.
Any member of the public have anything? Hearing none, I need a motion.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance number 620-14 for the Arizona Farms Annexation 2013-02.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 620-14 for the Arizona Farms Annexation 2013-02. Any other discussion? None, again, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montoya.
Aye.
Councilmember Selaya.
Aye.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember, or Mayor Rankin.
Mayor Rankin.
Mayor Rankin.
Aye, makes unanimous vote. We'll take just a minute and I'm going to sign these two. On these last two annexations we completed, I have signed them. They will be going to the recorder's office tomorrow. What that means is that in 30 days, on October the 2nd, 1914, the citizens that live in the Magic Ranch and the Arizona Farms area, annexation areas, will become citizens of the town of Florence. They will also have the right to vote in the upcoming election in November to select the council members that are coming. You will be citizens of ours, will be at your disposal, and we're here for you and we're working to try to make this a better community and we hope that we can all work together. I want to thank the people that there was pros and cons on both sides and the professionalism showed by the cons as well as by our staff. At this time, I'd like to thank our staff, who I thought did a tremendous job on gaining the signatures. The pre-annexation agreements that were done by the planning and zoning department cannot be overlooked. Mr. Eckoff, thank you very much for the hard work you put into it, you and your staff. Something that you always had help on before, but this time you were kind of out there doing it yourself. We really appreciate it. Where are you at? Thank you for putting all these together, guys and ladies and gentlemen of the community on the development end. We're going to make something Florence, something Florence is going to be something, but we need the people behind us. If you have any questions, please get with us. Our telephone numbers are listed, town hall number is listed. Leave a message and we will get back to you. If we don't get back to you, right that same day, the next two or three days, we will. Again, thank you for coming tonight. We really appreciate the attendance. Let's don't make this just a one-time shot. Let's get back and get involved in our community. Lisa.
We're now going to go on to new business. New business, item A, ordinance number 623-14, discussion approval disapproval of an ordinance of the town of Florence, Pinell County, Arizona, amending the town of Florence zoning map by changing the zoning classifications of certain parcels of land from Pinell County Planned Area Development Overlay Zoning District, PAD, and General Rule Zone, GR, to Town of Florence Planned Unit Development, PUD, zoning district, and Single Residential Ranchette R1R zoning district. Magic Ranch Annexation, comparable initial zoning. Mr. Eckoff?
Mayor, members of the council, upon annexation, comparable or initial zoning is applied. It's as close or as comparable as the zoning as we have. We've had discussions over the past year about what that means exactly. In this particular case, there was two zoning districts that were applied on properties out there and those two zoning districts equate to the R1R and the PUD zoning district. So almost as we've discussed over the past year, almost everything in the Magic Ranch Annexation is zoned as a master planned community in the county. That's known as a PAD. When it comes into the town, it's known as a PU, PUD. And I'd be happy to address any questions that you may have. This is, this is not a zone change, it's just an ordinance adopting the initial comparable zoning.
Any members of council have any question? Any member of the public? Hearing none, I need a motion.
Make a motion to accept ordinance number 62314, Magic Ranch Annexation, comparable zoning.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 623-14 for the initial and comparable zoning on the Magic Ranch Annexation area. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item B, ordinance number 624-14, discussion approval disapproval of an ordinance of the town of Florence, Pinell County, Arizona, amending the town of Florence zoning map by changing the zoning classification of certain parcels of land from Pinell County Planned Area Development Overlay Zoning District, PAD, General Rule Zone, GR, Single Resident Zone, CR-1A, and Manufactured Home Zone, MH, to Town of Florence Planned Unit Development, PUD, zoning district, Single Residential Ranchette, R1-R, zoning district, and Rural Residential Esquestrian subdivisions, RRES, zoning district, Arizona Farm Annexation, comparable initial zoning. Mr. Eckoff?
Mayor, members of the council, this is a similar process as the last case. Also, on the Arizona Farms Annexation, much of it was zoned PAD for master planned communities in Pinell County. That PUD, the PAD transfers to a PUD. The one thing that's a little bit different to note is that the MH zoning area now becomes the RRES and that is the special zoning district that we created specifically to be the most comparable to what the county had zoned on the Wild Horse Estate subdivision.
Okay. Any question, council? Any questions from the audience? Hearing none, I'll call for a motion, or we need a motion.
Make a motion to accept ordinance 624-14 for the initial comparable zoning on the Arizona Farms Annexation area.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 624-14 for the intel comparable zoning on the Arizona Farms Annexation area. Any other question? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Now we go back to unfinished business. Item A, new unfinished business, item A, ordinance number 613-14, discussion approval disapproval of an ordinance of the town of Florence, Pinell County, Arizona, approving the Ashburn at Magic Ranch Plan Unit Development, PZC, 20-14, PUD. First reading was held on August 4, 2014. Mr. Eckoff?
Mayor, members of the council, on the next five items, we went over them in pretty good detail. These are the five properties that upon annexation, they've asked to receive modified zoning. They're changing their zoning and 1, 2, 3, 4 of them actually were already going the way of master planned communities in the county. The one more, the one change that is a little bit more different is the Lookout Mountain 2, state land annexation, which goes from a rural designation to a master plan for multifamily and commercial. But being since that we've have also discussed these in detail, I would just add that if you have any questions about any of these items as I present them, as they come up, I'd be happy to address them.
Any member of the council have any on the Ashburn? Thanks, Mark.
Need a motion?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance number 613-14 for the Ashburn at Magic Ranch, PUD.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 613-14, at the Ashburn at Magic Ranch, PUD. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item B, ordinance number 618-14, discussion approval disapproval of an ordinance of the town of Florence, Pinell County, Arizona, approving the Reserve at Lookout Mountain Plan Unit Development, PZC 02-14-PUD. First reading was held on August 4, 2014. Mr. Eckoff?
Mayor, council, I'd be happy to address any questions you may have about this case.
Any question, council? Hearing none, I need a motion.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance number 618-14, Reserve at Lookout Mountain, PUD.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 618-14, Reserve at Lookout Mountain, PUD. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item C, ordinance number 614-14, discussion approval disapproval of an ordinance of the town of Florence, Pinell County, Arizona, approving the Lookout Mountain 2 Planned Unit Development, PZC 21-14, PUD. First reading was held on August 4, 2014. I'll turn it over to you, mayor.
Any question for Mark? Any questions? Okay, don't hear none? Need a motion?
Motion to adopt ordinance number 614-14 for Lookout Mountain 2, PUD.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 614-14 for Lookout Mountain 2, PUD. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item D, ordinance number 616-14, discussion approval disapproval of an ordinance of the town of Florence, Pinell County, Arizona, approving the Arizona Farms West Planned Unit Development, PZC 24-14, PUD. First reading was held on August 4, 2014. Mayor?
Same thing. Do we, any member have any questions for Mark? Hearing none, I need a motion.
Make a motion to accept ordinance number 616-14, Arizona Farms West, PUD.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 616-14 for Arizona Farms West, PUD. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item E, ordinance number 617-14, discussion approval disapproval of an ordinance of the town of Florence, Pinell County, Arizona, approving the Arizona Farms Planned Unit Development, PZC 25-14, PUD. First reading was held on August 4, 2014. Mayor?
Any member of the council have any question for Mark?
No.
Hearing none, need a motion?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance number 617-14 for Arizona Farms East, PUD.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 617-14 for Arizona Farms East, PUD. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item F, ordinance number 612-14, discussion approval disapproval of an ordinance of the town of Florence, Pinell County, Arizona, amending Chapter 32 of the town code by adding Article 32, Section 32.200, establishing an Arts and Culture Commission in the town of Florence. First reading was held on August 18, 2014. Mayor, if you recall, Ms. Evans was at the last meeting and gave a presentation on the Arts and Culture Commission followed by brief statements of councilmember Selaya, who has been the champion for this program. This will put the provisions in the code to allow us to move forward with a arts program, regardless of whether we do it this year, the next year, or many years to come. It will be in place. If anyone has any questions, please, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any...
Yes, I do. I've had several people call me on this and they're wondering with the loss of home rule, should we be spending $100,000 at this time to get this off the ground?
$100,000 was placed in this year's budget to be able to be used as a part of the arts program. This year, we are not affected by home rule. You have to remember, home rule, what home rule means, and I can have Mike speak on this a little too. It's not that we, if we collect all of the monies that we collect and we have them, it's just that we may be unable to spend them. So while this would be placed on the books and in an ordinance, it would be up to the council each year when they're adopting the money, adopting the budget to either cede that program or not cede that program.
Okay, so if we, if we have the $100,000 in there and we decide down the road that it's not the time to spend it, you know, I mean...
Then council would choose not to spend it at that time. If you cede the program for this year and you have $100,000 and you go forward with creating a program and they find artwork for the community and council approves the purchase, then it could be purchased in this fiscal year and maybe the next following fiscal years, they get creative on what kind of programs they're going to do to still bring culture to the community. Maybe not the purchase of an expensive piece of art, but still bring culture to the community.
I think the important thing is setting the guidelines on it.
Tommy, just a minute. Bill.
No, I think it's a great program. Don't get me wrong. I'm just, you know, I've got people that are, you know, worried about the budget and stuff and I'm just making sure where everybody real, understands what's going on here. So that's, that's all I'm trying to do, is make sure the public understands where we're at.
I understand. We are not on a limitation as of this fiscal year. Your finance director will meet with you and have work sessions to say what the expenditure limitation does mean to the town of Florence. Those are all going to be upcoming. They're going to be advertised for the public to be in attendance, but that limitation will begin July 1, 2015.
Okay, so any purchases will come before us. The commission won't just go out and spend the money, right?
Right now, the code states that anything over $24,999 comes before council. Anything underneath that amount, the manager may approve anything underneath that amount. So we would be following current town code and limits.
Tommy.
Yeah, as I was saying, the important thing is that we're establishing the ability to do this. Whether we have the funding for it or not can be decided at a different time, but we're basing the foundation for a program, so...
No, I want to give this to Tom Selaya for his motion.
You want?
Give this to Tom Selaya for motion.
And Bill, I think you brought up some interesting points and Lisa did too. The home rule doesn't affect us this year. It doesn't go into effect until 15 or 15, 16. We've taken a look at it. I've been working with staff diligently on this to try to find where we're at. We're coming up with some numbers that we will be able to present, not only to the council, but to the whole public so that they'll see and they'll have input in what we're doing. There's some issues that need to be addressed and we know that, but we hope that we can come away with everybody working together. We're not going to be behind the eight ball financially. We believe that we have a way to get out of that and it'll work. So we'll, like I said, again, more information will be coming out on the ramifications of what happened on the election for home rule. Tommy, you want to make the motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 621-14.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 621-14. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Ordinance number 622-14, discussion approval disapproval of an ordinance of the town of Florence, Pinell County, Arizona, amending Title IX, General Regulations by amending and deleting and replacing Chapter 90, Animals Definitions, P... and deleting and replacing Chapter 90, Animals Definitions Penalty. First reading was held August 18th, 2014. Chief Use, would you like to address this topic?
Dan?
Mr. Mayor and council, those are some minor changes that will allow the officers to issue citations and better manage our agreement with Pinellas County Animal Control. That's the basis of the ordinance.
I think we had this discussion a couple of weeks ago. Is there any other questions the council has, or Dan?
I noticed, chief, that the way that it's written, it talks about animal dog control. Does this apply to other pets?
It could. We've... mainly it deals with dogs, which seems to be the biggest problem. If we get into cats or something else, we still do address those issues, however, this is mainly for the dogs.
Any other discussion? Need a motion?
Make a motion to accept ordinance number 622-14, Animal Control.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 622-14. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
This will be our second new business of the evening. Item A, discussion approval disapproval to award a contract with Courier Construction, Inc., for improvements at the South Wastewater Treatment Plant, including the reuse pump station, chlorine facility upgrade, and operations building expansion in amount not to exceed Mr. Mitchell will be addressing you.
Mayor, members of the council, good evening. This, in fact, is a request to award a contract to Courier Construction for the work at the South Wastewater Treatment Plant. This project genesis was an ADQ consent order that the town entered into in August of 2013. The consent order addressed a number of items out at that south plant. Some we've already worked on. If you recall, we drilled a new monitoring well out there. We were required to complete eight months' worth of sampling. We did so. Now we're prepared to move forward with that to set detection limits for possible contaminants out there. So that's just one of the many projects we're working on. This one here was to deal with exceedances of some of our effluent. We bid this project in July, opening July 2014. We had three bidders. The lowest bidder, Sun Western Contractors, submitted two bid tabs, so they were declared non-responsive. The second was Courier Construction, and their bid came in at 1.549184 million dollars. The budget, current CIP budget, had a little over $1 million available for this project. In looking at the entirety of the budget, we were about $473,000 short. So I'm making a recommendation that three of the CIP projects that look towards future construction, future growth, be removed from the current CIP. We will look at those in upcoming years and factor them in when future growth becomes even more certain. Those three projects, the largest of the three, is a recharge injection well project out at the South Wastewater Treatment Plant at $330,000. I'm not so concerned about that one, because we're doing a master plan utilizing a WIFL loan that the town got a number of years ago. We will work in the recharge of the expansion of the plant, and with that one, refresh those numbers and bring them back to you. The other two projects are sewer line replacement projects and an 18-inch bore, it's State Route 79 and Hunt Highway. Again, it's dependent upon future growth. So the recommendation tonight is that we award the contract to Courier Construction, and that CIP projects, SU 05, SU 06, and SU 11 be eliminated from the current CIP and reintroduced as future growth becomes more certain. I do have Rob Bryant with us this evening from Waterworks Engineers. He's been the engineer working on all of the project at the south plant. If you have any technical questions of Rob, we'd be happy to answer those. I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Look at the council. Do any of us look like we were a consumer? How could we have questions of an engineer? When we flush the toilet, don't work, we call a plumber. We don't call an engineer. Does any other member of the council have any comment or anything?
You said it all.
Thank you, John.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Need a motion?
Make a motion to award a contract with Courier Construction Incorporated for improvements at the South Wastewater Treatment Plant, including the reuse pump station, chlorine facility upgrade, and operations building expansion in an amount not to exceed $1,549,184.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to award a contract with Courier Construction Incorporated for improvements at the South Wastewater Treatment Plant, including reuse pump station, chlorine facility upgrade, and operations building expansion in amount not to exceed Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Item B, resolution number 147914, discussion approval disapproval of a resolution of the town of Florence, Pinellas County, Arizona, approving the appointment of Judge Katherine Kaiser as juvenile hearing officer. Mr. Manata will be handling this item.
Thank you, mayor, and members of the council. This item is for your review tonight regarding Judge Kaiser. Judge Kaiser was appointed by the Pinellas County Superior Court to act as a juvenile hearing officer, which is in keeping with all of the prior judges of the Florence Municipal Court, as far as I know, going back to Judge Jensen. And so there is a legal requirement for the administrative order of the Superior Court to be approved by the local governing body, which is the town council. And so I've placed this resolution before you, so that Judge Kaiser's appointment will have the necessary authority from the town council.
Any questions, Jim? Hearing none, I'll call for a motion.
I don't know, it's his resolution.
Still action. Make a motion to adopt the resolution of 1479-14.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number 1479-14. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Under department reports, mayor, there is no manager's report, but I would just like to say that, one, I would like to thank all the residents who did come out and vote in the previous election, and we will be canvassing that election at the September 15th, 2014 council meeting. Also, that, again, as you mentioned, that the annexation areas will be voting in the November 4th meeting. It's only those members who are currently registered. If you're unregistered and you do want to vote, you need to contact the Pinellas County Voter Registration and get registered in time to vote in the November 4th election. And I want to thank all of our department heads for their work that they've been doing, the work on the annexation, as well as the work that they've been doing. We have a great team, and I appreciate them. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions, the department heads that are here tonight? Okay, this is the second call to the public. First, as we had, I'll call first Denise Colbert.
Denise Colbert, 802 East McFarland Boulevard, Florence Gardens, Florence, Ohio, Arizona. The lady who spoke earlier said that the vote was of no confidence in you. I disagree. I think it was a vote of selfishness. This project that you are contemplating for next door is something this town needs. It's vital for our youth and our children and the patrons who come to the library. What some people don't understand is when you put out a bid, it takes a few months for all that to go through. If this isn't continued, the town of Florence will no longer have a library. We're out of the building the end of May of next year. I don't want to see that happen. We won't have a swimming pool for the kids, because the school's going to fill that in. So there, in the summertime, there's going to be nothing, absolutely nothing, for these kids to do. I think it is unfair of people who live in communities that have these areas, swimming areas, to say, "I don't want to fund it for anybody else. I have it in my community, and I'm funding it through my HOA fees." But I am not so selfish that I don't want to share and have it for everyone that lives in the community, including the new people who just joined our community. I have been an advocate for this from the get-go. I told you a couple of weeks ago, I was giving up, because nobody seemed to be speaking. Well, I saw a really great letter in the paper last week. It was nice to see someone else agrees of what I've been saying from all along. So when this comes up in a couple of weeks, like I've been promised, I hope everyone setting up there understands that this is for everyone in the Florence community, whether you live in the gardens, whether you live in the core, whether you live in Anthem, whether you live in where our new communities are. It's for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Ruth?
Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight you have approved the start of an Arts and Culture Commission. From what I've read and heard, most of the focus will be on various pieces of art to be displayed in public around town. I would like to suggest that a sizable portion of the budgeted $100,000 be used for the performing arts, music, drama, dance, poetry, et cetera. Those are cultural fine arts, too. Cultural fine arts events will enhance the lives of our residents and will bring people to Florence to enjoy our town. That's what we want, isn't it? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the audience? This time I call the public, call the council, start with Bill.
Well, on the subject of the project over here, we haven't made a final decision on what's going to be built. We've been discussing it, and I think this election showed that there's a lot of people that don't agree with the direction we're going, or the amount of money we're spending. I don't know about, you know, the library, or the pool, or the aquatics park, or what particular, but I think we need to maybe spend a little more time on some public hearings and get a little more input on, do we want to replace the library we have? Do we want to go above and beyond that? Or do we want to just replace what we're losing with the pool and the library? Or do we want to build a, you know, $13 million complex? But I think we need to look at that a little more, for sure. I've been saying that all along, but I think the election kind of showed that I wasn't too far off base. I think the people, we need more participation from the citizens.
Tommy?
Well, I completely disagree with that. For the last 10 years, our citizens have been asking us why the town of Florence has nothing, nothing for the adults, nothing for the kids, and why the town doesn't do anything about this. And the answer's always been, you know, we need rooftops, we need population in order to support that. And we've worked ever since then to try and bring something, and we see something based with the model that what Polte has done out there. The first thing that they did was they set up that recreation facility, and when the people see that, they come to that, because they know that there's a buy-in with the people there that they want it to be successful. What we have here is something that's going to fill several of our needs and our wants. Our needs for a library, because our library at the school is closing. Our needs for a pool, because the pool is closing. And our wants to have something for our kids to do. I kind of agree with Denise, but I didn't want to come out and exactly say that. I think that it wasn't a vote of no confidence, but it was a vote of public misinformation. And I think whether it's reflected by maybe some of our council members on their mood towards the item, maybe it's public information that's going out by some of the candidates that are running in order to maybe foothold position by making things look like they're worse than they are. This town has never been in as good a financial condition as it is right now. We've planned for this. I think, from what I understand, some of the people think that the home rule, we were actually out trying to raise people's taxes, and that's just... that's baffling to me that they took it that way. They don't understand that we're collecting that money, nothing has changed, other than the fact that now we can't use the money that we're collecting from you, because the state says that you have to use it in a certain way, and you're limited to the way that you can use it. We've never been in a better position to provide something like this for our town. And I don't want to take the chance that we won't see this again. This is something that has to go for the town. This is for our people. We have really been working. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Reuben?
Yes, at first, I'd like to thank our staff for the display of the flags along Main Street during Labor Day. I think it's really good that, you know, we show patriotism, that we're all in unity, for something that is great for everybody. And going along with what Mr. Selaya said, and Denise, Denise she spoke very well, as well as Charles Goseman did in the editorial for the Florence paper, I think it's really important to understand when we build something, we're doing it to, for everybody to enjoy. And looking at what's there, it's the idea of, let's expand. You know, I was in Maricopa this past weekend, and they built, I believe it's an $85 million community development area just for recreation, including an aquatic center, a huge gymnasium, basketball courts, and it's all indoors. I mean, we're always concerned about the heat. We might as well build something so that we can enjoy it indoors. You know, you go through all summer long, and we try and keep our kids indoors, and here's our opportunity to say, "Don't go on the heat. You get heat exhaustion, you get, you know, heat stroke. We can build this indoors." And we do have the funding available to pay for it all. We just are looking at an idea, saying, "Is it cheaper to provide a $5 million bond?" But if we don't go that way, we do have the money available. So that's an important thing to look at. It isn't the idea to say, "We're going to put this money on the people of our communities." No, we have the money. Just like Mr. Selaya said, we're very rich at this moment. But that leads us into the home rule. And my concern to our staffing is that with the home rule coming in place, one of the areas that we will not be allowed to look at, and the majority of it will be construction, especially in roads and streets. And I think for this fiscal year, for 2014 and 15, we need to complete all our construction that we can on the roads and the streets, especially areas where we have temporary signs, areas that we have rough roads. And I think it's really important that we eliminate those caution road signs and show that we're making the improvement that we can this year. That's all I got.
Tom?
The people we need to thank for the flags is the American Legion.
Oh, Legion, well, thank them.
But the town has supplied those flags for them for years, and I don't know how they stand on damaged flags right now. stand on damaged flags right now, but I'll find out, okay? Also, I think enough has been said tonight, so, uh, I'll just pass tonight.
Well, I have a few things I wanna say, as usual. I'll take a lot of responsibility for the failure of the home rule, because I didn't get out enough and make a lot of public appearances and get organizations behind us. I don't think it's a loss of confidence of the council, Barbara, I disagree with you on that. The only area that passed home rule of the three areas being the core, the Florence Gardens and Anthem area, was the Anthem area. Final results show they passed it for us. Again, showing that this community is starting to come together as one, not as three different entities. The lack of confidence in the council may be expressed by a few, and everybody's got their right to have a point of view. I have my point of view, doesn't match with that, but that's, that's my point of view. Everybody painting a negative of the home rule failing. I can't tell you right now, but there's other avenues that we can go that's gonna make it successful, even with the failure of the home rule in this last election. If you'll take a look at the election, the legislature that sits up in Phoenix that makes the rules, put it on communities our size, put it on every community, when they passed the new election laws, they lumped, and we tried to explain this to that Representative Eugente up there, that's controlled by the Goldwater Institute, that does exactly what she want, they want her to do. We told him that it's gonna hurt the small-town elections, she didn't agree. In the election where I was elected mayor, because there was a lot of going on, in our all-male ballot here in Florence, we had 53% of the voters respond to the election, 53%. This election, Lisa, what did we get?
I did not bring that number with me, and I do not have-
It's about 20%, isn't it? 20%. Where'd that other 30% go? They're here. When they lumped the elections together, they put us, the municipalities, at the bottom of the poll of the, of your ballot. In fact, on the Democratic ballot, if you didn't know the home rule's on the back page and you didn't turn it over, you didn't see the home rule option there. Was it fair? No. Did the Congress and legislature up in Phoenix make it harder on communities our size? Anybody? Yes, they did. Is there discrepancy between a charter city and a community like Florence that's not a charter? Yes, there are. But the wisdom of those representatives up in Phoenix are gonna hurt, we are now a nonpartisan election and a partisan election. Now, you explain that to me, I, that's my opinion, and that's where we sit on that. The 15th of September's gonna be a very important portion of meeting here at the town hall. You're gonna hear what we're gonna do or not do. You're gonna hear the same numbers that we hear from our staff that will direct us in the decision that we have to make up here on how to spend the money or not spend the money. You're gonna hear the, the same information, we get that information out to everyone. The numbers I've seen in political flyers, I believe are completely outrageously high, because none of the candidates, from my understanding, ever come in and talk to staff about it. Now, that's not right, if you're running for council, you get your numbers right before you go out and make your statements, especially put them in, in that. What Tommy said about 10 years, and I can probably speak on this just as well as anybody in this room or anybody in this town, because I've been on the council on and off, been with the town since 1980. One of the biggest things that happened to Florence, Arizona, was getting Heritage Park built in the last 20 years, for recreation for kids and adults alike. Last 20 years, think about that, folks, that's all we've done, but we've been saving this money. For 12 years, we've been a planning community, we've been planning these projects. Now we're at a point where we have to spend the money. It's not because we want to do it, we all wanted something better, but we're at a point now that if we don't spend the money, we're gonna lose it. Who's gonna get it back? The homeowner? No. The developer, home builder, they get the money. Is that right? No. We're gonna take this money and we're gonna do something with it, we don't know what we're gonna do yet, you'll find out on the 15th, if you all come to the meeting. And I would encourage all of you to come to the meeting, to get the facts. Anybody that makes an election, or runs for election, wants their folks to get the facts and get it right, and that's what this council does. This council wants the facts out so that the people know, and I, I think I speak for the whole council on that, I, I didn't ask them, but I'm sure that that's what they would agree with, and we're gonna do that. With that, need a motion?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, we adjourn. Thank you for coming, folks.